Welcome, everybody. Glad to see you here. I will go ahead and call today's meeting to order. This is the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for October 20th, 2025. It is 5:00 PM. If you could join me for the pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll now take a moment of silence for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. At this part, I'd like to take a special pause to remember Jorge Salinas, who faithfully served our county and community with dedication, professionalism, and kindness. Jorge and his wife Nancy were laid to rest on Friday at Jacksonville National Cemetery. Jorge's leadership and friendship left a lasting impact on many of us here, and his legacy continues through the people and programs he helps shape. We'll also take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All right, thank you very much. Again, appreciate everybody being here this evening. We're going to, we added roll call to the agenda just to make sure we verbalize our attendance. So, Mr. Hanson, you want to start us off? Here. Commissioner Pennington?
Here.
Commissioner Carney?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
And here, the chair, thank you. We have a few announcements. Upcoming commission meetings and workshops. We have our next regular meeting Monday, November 3rd at 9:00 AM, and our next workshop will be Monday, November 3rd at 1:00 PM. And today, our first recognition is for Crime Stoppers of Northeast Florida, the Officer of the Year, Master Detective Katherine Gordon. This is presented by Crime Stoppers of Northeast Florida. Mr. Fuller, how are you this evening?
Terrific. Thank you, Honorable Chair Andy Dance, Honorable Vice Chair Leanne Pennington, honorable commissioners. It's a privilege to be here this evening, and I don't want to go any further here. A lot of people don't know what Crime Stoppers is or what we do, so I'm going to have Roland give a little commercial. I know these, we don't really, really want to go long because our star of the moment, we really wanted on her. So Roland's going to give a little commercial about Crime Stoppers, and then Greg Feldman's going to tell you how the voting took place in absolutely her winning this award. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening.
Evening.
So, I'd like to leave you with three things about Crime Stoppers. I'd like you to leave here with three things, just in your mind. Crime Stoppers used to be merely a tip line, but it's become a real investigative tool for law enforcement nowadays. The hallmark of Crime Stoppers is our maintenance of anonymity, is that we guarantee the anonymity of anybody who provides a tip, and we've figured out how to reward them, pay them, without them having to show ID or do anything like that. So it's really incentivized people. We've also, technology has helped us, and now with the P3 app, we're able to have detectives still maintain that shield of anonymity and still reach out and solve both current and cold cases through that. And the last thing that I'd like you to remember, that I'd like you all to carry out of here, is how we are funded. We pay our rewards with funds that we acquire from the fines that criminals pay. So the more that we use the Crime Stoppers program, and the more criminals we put back in the system where they belong, the more those funds are. So any fundraising, any funding that we provide to law enforcement is done without any taxpayer impact. Greg?
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Greg Feldman from Crime Stoppers. I was a member of the voting committee for the Officer of the Year, a little bit of law enforcement experience, so they picked me among others. There was no question with regard to the size of the agency, there were several entrants. But when you read Katherine's entries, excuse me, entry from the sheriff's office, I went through it, and there was just no question, you have a real star here. You have a wonderful investigator who will do great things and continue to do great things for the county. And I'll bring up Ed now, he's going to read the actual information.
Thank you, Greg. There are so many things that Master Detective Katherine Gordon does, it could be 20 minutes, but it won't be, because the whole idea is to honor her, and her accomplishments will speak for themselves. Master Deputy Katherine Gordon of the Flagler Sheriff's has distinguished herself in the agency, investigators, serving the major case crime unit for four years. In that time, she has taken in some of the county's most demanding cases, from homicide and shootings to complex sexual offenses involving vulnerable children. Her persistence still and compassion have brought offenders to justice and provided closure to victims and families. That's an amazing accomplishment just right there. We can dig into that, but we're not going to, but just think about just that particular Among the accomplishments for the past years, Gordon investigated multi-jurisdictional sex offenses and covering multiple child victims across three states, not one, not two, but three states, and securing confessions that had, that led to significant arrests. She also spearheaded cases involving sexual exploitation, including the arrest of suspects for human trafficking and unlawful sexual activity with a minor, and pursued offenders throughout control calls, search warrants, and undercover operations. She even assisted federal units in the agencies in aircraft crash recovery, working in road-hazardous conditions, recovery mains, and evidence. The depth and breadth of what detective, Master Detective does is amazing. Like I said, this is a heck of an accomplishment. Beyond the caseload, Gordon is a proven leader. She trained five new detectives, instructed all new hires in investigative techniques, and serves as the FDLE certified instructor. Recently promoted to Master Detective, while completing that master's degree, she exemplifies professionalism, mentoring, and dedication to community service. Now, I'd like to call up her colleagues, please, our members of Crime Stoppers, Master Detective Gordon, and I believe your mom and dad here, we'd like to have you up here too, because without you, we wouldn't have her today, now would we?
Right.
Now, this isn't TV, but I want you to visualize in your mind this humongous award.
Make sure you point out. So Detective Gordon, we actually competed because we're a large agency.
I need you to get over there.
Because we're a larger agency, we actually competed directly against St. John's County Sheriff's Office, Putnam County, Volusia, Daytona Beach PD, and Detective Gordon was the top out of all of them.
Oh, amen. Good for you.
I want to urge our county commissioners to go to the banquet next year, because, I'll be honest with you, I cried when she won the award, because when I read her bio, and then I actually got a chance to talk to her, it's amazing, the type of law enforcement officers we have here in Flagler County, and she exemplifies the very best. Now, Master Dec, I know you're very humble, but I ask you to say a few words, if you won't mind.
Thank you. I'm going to spend this time thanking you guys for recognizing a bunch of different law enforcement officers, because it really means a lot to us to be recognized for the work that we do, because not a lot of times, we're hearing about the good that law enforcement does. A lot of times, we're just seeing the bad things on the news. So it means a lot to me that you guys work with us in that capacity and also recognize us, so thank you guys for that. And Flagler County Sheriff's Office, I've been there, going on six years in January. It has come an extremely long way, and I think that it's a testament to the funding that we're getting, of how much more resources that we're able to use, whether it be license plate readers or other technology. I really think that you guys helping us by getting that funding is a testament to the type of people that we're hiring at the agency, and it's helping us in investigations and everything, so I wanted to thank you guys for that. I didn't know if you guys had any other words?
I already bragged about you.
Okay. I just wanted to spend my time thanking other people, because it does go a long way, especially when you guys recognize us and provide that kind of thing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing, if I may. At a rock concert, when you see the star come out, you usually give him a standing ovation. We have a rock star. So ladies and gentlemen, would you please rise and give our Master Detective a standing ovation? Thank you.
Now, come on up for your, that's right.
When did she get the award? Oh, it was absolutely a man.
I was there, I was there.
Nice.
I was next to one of the behind her.
Sorry, you never, you squeeze in, act like you like each other?
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job.
Congratulations again. Mr. Fuller, this time, next year? Okay. That's right. All right, our next recognition will be for the retirement of Luis Perez, Innovation Technology Support Supervisor. So we'll have that presented by Charlie Pacano, our Human Resources Director, and Matt Rivera with Information Technologies. Chief Information Officer? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Hi, guys. Charlie Pacano, HR Director. I'm really excited to use this time to honor and congratulate a special employee in retiring after 10 dedicated years of service to Flagler County. Louis brought a lot of experience to the county and has done a great job over the last 10 years, and it's always awesome to take a moment like this to honor somebody and celebrate their retirement, so thank you on behalf of the county. We have a certificate for your retirement, and then we also have a plaque. Sorry, I want to drop it, but.
Very nice.
We'll probably take a picture after, but Matt has a couple of things to say.
Mr. Chair, board members, Matt Rivera, County Chief Information Officer. I've had the honor of working with Charlie, or, I have had the honor of working with Charlie, but Louis is really who we're here to talk about. I've had the honor of working with Louis. I just wrote down a few thoughts that I wanted to share. So today, we recognize someone who's been more than just a colleague. Louis has been a cornerstone of our IT department and our IT support team specifically, a trusted problem solver, and let's be honest, the Jedi Master of county government technology. Louis, during your years here, you've kept our systems running and end-users supported and our sanity intact. Well, mostly intact, I think, as much as it can be with IT. Whether it was a server hiccup, a printer rebellion, or a mystery ticket from the outer rim of the help desk queue, you handled it all with patience, professionalism, and a quiet confidence that made everything feel manageable. But beyond your technological prowess, you brought personality, whether it was, sorry, technology issues. Yeah. Well, I'll go off topic. So basically, whether you were just reminiscing about times from your Corvette shows that you liked to attend, or the Corvette Club, you just, you always brought life, and you showed us that it was about people, right, and bringing the personal side into the work that we do and the support for all of our end-users, and you just made the office so very enjoyable. So Louis, as you move on into your retirement, I wish you nothing but the best and nothing but new roads for your Corvette. I hope you spend a lot of time out there, maybe some Star Wars marathons in there, but, yeah. But on the topic of your Corvette, because it's very, very special to him, the department wanted to get you a gift, so if you turn around there, Carlos has officially licensed from GM Corvette jacket for you. So as you're cruising down the road in retirement, you could think of us.
I was afraid it was going to be a Hot Wheels. Oh, that's great.
Speech?
Yes. Well, I first wanted to say something about Heidi. She's, the culture here has changed so much since you got here. I really feel like I should say something about, I mean, there were employees that were on the verge of quitting at times, but after you came, there's been a change, so, and I thought it was just me, but I spoke to others in my office, and they all seemed to think that since you've started here, and unfortunately Jorge also, rest in peace, you changed the culture here, and I want to thank you. Also, Matt has been fantastic, always giving me what I need to do the job, and Robert has been, you know, somebody I could lean on. Yeah, the whole IT staff, including Carlos, is just, I think, fantastic, so I'm going to miss a lot of you guys here, so.
Want to take a picture?
Yep, come on up.
That's a lot for an IT guy to talk. They're printers.
What was I going to say? Are we missing people?
That's better. I feel like we're going to fall off.
Enjoy your time. Enjoy retirement.
Enjoy your time.
You deserve it.
And thank you, Louis. My apologies for getting your name wrong at first. Good job. Congratulations. All right, we'll move on to our only proclamation this evening. This is for Medical Assistance Recognition Week, which is October 20th through 24th, 2025, and this is requested by Ms. Lauren Ramirez, our esteemed school board member also. Welcome.
Thank you.
We have Commissioner Pennington with your proclamation this evening.
This is a proclamation of the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners, recognizing October 20th through 24th of 2025 as Medical Assistance Recognition Week in Flagler County. Whereas medical assistants are at the heart of healthcare, serving as vital members of medical teams in clinics, physician offices, hospitals, and training programs; and whereas medical assistants perform a wide range of clinical and administrative duties, ensuring patients receive safe, efficient, and compassionate care; and whereas the profession plays a key role in preparing the next generation of healthcare workers through education, training, and mentorship; and whereas medical assistants continue to contribute to the overall health and wellness of our community, making a meaningful difference in the lives of countless patients and families. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners that we hereby proclaim October 20th through 24th of 2025 as Medical Assistance Recognition Week in Flagler County. Further, we encourage all citizens to recognize and appreciate the contributions of medical assistance to our healthcare system and community. Adopted this 20th day of October, 2025, attested by Tom Bexley, our clerk, and Andrew Danz, our chair. For Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation of Flagler County Board of County Commissioners for Medical Assistance Recognition Week.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Pennington, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. I'm making up for the other meeting. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I'd like to just thank you for allowing us to have this proclamation. I wanted to introduce Ms. Kaylee Arden, so she is one of 66 medical assistants, registered medical assistants here, that have gone through our program, and was a recent Flagler Palm Coast High School grad, wasn't sure what she wanted to do, tried out the medical field, she is working full-time now at an amazing psychiatric clinic, and will be starting nursing school. She realized that this is the role she wants to be in, and I just thank you for this, and we appreciate it, so thank you.
Congratulations again. Thank you for being here and for recognizing the professions.
All right.
Now, come up to get your proclamation, and we'll do a picture.
All right, ready?
Getting good at that.
It only took me three years.
Come over to the right.
Thank you.
Good job. All right. Good job. Congratulations. Nice to meet you. Good luck. Good luck in nursing. Good job. Good job.
All right, well, that concludes our recognitions and proclamations for this evening. Thank you again for everybody for being here, for those. We'll move on to community outreach. This is a 30-minute time period, been allocated for public comment. On any consent agenda item or topic that's not on the agenda, each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to address the commission. Speakers should approach the podium, identify themselves, and direct comments to the commission. Is anybody here for public comment this evening? Good evening.
Good evening, Darlene Shelley, Case Section.
Good evening, Darlene Shelley, Case Section, Palm Coast. I was just going to ask if we could take a look at a few items on the consent agenda. Tried to do some research on it and there wasn't a lot of data. Looking at 7D and 7F, 7G, 7I, 7J, and 7M. Most of my concerns have to do with the airport and just asking for a little bit more transparency there and what some of these consent agendas might consist of as far as the parcels that they pertain to. It just seems to have been a lack of transparency sometimes with things happening at the airport in which consent agendas will be approved without a lot of folks knowing what is really entailed with it or what the end game might be. So I'd like to see a little bit more transparency with that. I also, well, you know my concerns about the excessive training operations at Flagler Airport for many reasons, mostly because of the piston engine aircraft and the lead and toxic chemicals that are in the emissions and the low altitudes at which they fly over our homes and hospitals and businesses, over our cancer centers and our playgrounds and our densely populated big box retailers in which hundreds of people are shopping at any given time. And when I fuel up at PJs, it seems as though the planes are barely clearing the trees. And I shudder to think of what would happen if one of these student pilots, many of which have English language as their second language, makes one small mistake and crashes into a home or a retail establishment. And how many hundreds of people may be killed in that scenario? And when you watch the news, this is something that happens two, three times a day. And I'm sure we don't even hear about all of the accidents. So again, a little more transparency, please, if we could discuss some of the items related to the airport and Old Brick Road, because I'd like to see that be preserved as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for this period of public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back, close public comment and bring it back to the board. Ms. Shelley, I will read, I did get one email with a question on the airport, so I'll read that and then provide an answer, so that might help. But it was in regards to 7F and 7G, which related to the rental space agreements for hangars. The email asks for assurances that the LLCs are solvent for the entire amount due on their lease or have assets that can be attached or that they can be evicted in 30 days for two months' rent. And in reviewing the leases, our standard Flagler Executive Airport lease agreements include default provisions that allow the county to terminate and evict for non-payment after 30 days and require tenants to maintain financial capability and insurance coverage. So those safeguards are intact to protect taxpayers. So just wanted to bring that one forward as an email that I got. All right, back to consent. Is there any comments on any of the consent items that anybody wants to bring forward?
No, sir.
Just a comment because she asked about the brick road. 7D is a step in the process for preservation and conservation of the brick road. We've been working on it for about two and a half years. This is a necessary step so we can get into protecting the road permanently. So it's just a map filing.
Okay.
And may I ask, because I wasn't here in the beginning, do the rest of my colleagues believe it's adequate, the adequate step? Did you get what you wanted from it?
It's, so yeah, they have to do this in order to show ownership, I believe. And then from here, we need to work towards the ILA with Palm Coast.
Yeah, the issue is encroachment by the city. That's what we have to protect.
Yeah. So that's a big takeaway for legal this year. I know Mr. Rodriguez is new, but I feel like we've been working on the brick road a couple of years, so hopefully we'll get closer to it.
Okay. Anybody else with any comments? Is there anything anybody wants to pull? Commissioner Hanson?
No, sir.
Commissioner Pennington?
No.
Commissioner Carney?
No.
Commissioner Richardson? Okay. I don't have anything either.
Ms. Chairman, a move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Carney. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll move to general business item 8A. This is a request to name the Flagler County Sheriff's Office Operations Center for Sheriff Rick Staley Law Enforcement Center. Staff has put forth a recommendation to adopt the resolution and this is being presented by Mr. Adam Mangle, the Growth Management Director.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Adam Mangle, Growth Management Director. I do have a PowerPoint, but there's really not much to share here with us. I did go through in the PowerPoint the same items I did put into the staff report about the naming facilities, resolution that we have and that it's something that should be done rarely. I do think that we provided enough justification for Sheriff Staley's career since 1975, his contributions both professionally, statewide, nationally, and here certainly locally, and what he's accomplished in his tenure since 2016 as our sheriff. With that, I can answer any questions you may have about the resolution and the naming policy itself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you for, as part of the procedure, for having to review all that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions from Mr. Mangle or any comments from the dais?
No.
I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. So if there's anybody from the public that wishes to address us on this item, good evening. So state your name.
My name's Charles Hayes and I've been a resident of Flagler County since 2007. And I am in favor of this motion. I have two years in the Army as a military police officer, so I have a little bit of experience, not a whole lot, but a little bit. And we are very fortunate here in Flagler County to have Sheriff Staley. He is a leader, goes by example. What I see in the department is very high professionalism. They're very well-trained. They're very well-equipped. We feel safe here in this community because of what has happened. We've been here for four sheriffs and this one is the best, you know, that we've had in Flagler County that I can relate to. And so I just want to say that as a citizen that I really appreciate all he has done and his leadership is exemplary, his motivation to the troops is good, and I would only say that I'm in favor of this motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Commissioners Chair. My name is Jessica Durrance Westbrook. I represent the Durrance family, natives of Bonnell. And we respectfully applaud the proposing naming of Flagler County Sheriff's Operations Center after Rick Staley. While Sheriff Staley has made significant contributions to law enforcement and community safety, including 54% crime reduction during his tenure and modernizing the sheriff's office, we believe these accomplishments do not outweigh the profound historical sacrifice and legacy of Deputy George Sondurant's. Deputy Durrant's sacrifice is intricately tied to that of Sheriff Perry Hall, whose name is already honored by the Perry Hall inmate detention facility. Both men died in the line of duty within days of each other in August of 1927 during a violent era of law enforcement marked by bootlegging and lawlessness. Sheriff Hall died from injury sustained during a prohibition raid and Deputy Durrant was fatally shot while pursuing the suspect responsible. Naming the operations center after Deputy Durrant would create powerful unified tribute to the foundational sacrifices made in protecting our community. This naming would more deeply honor the community's historic values of courage, loyalty, and service. It would preserve and highlight the legacy of two fallen heroes who represent the spirit and resilience upon which Flagler County law enforcement was built. Sheriff Staley's services is commendable and impactful in modern times. The symbolic value of connecting Deputy Durrant's name alongside Sheriff Perry Hall's provides a richer, more meaningful tribute aligned with our community's heritage. We urge you county officials to reconsider and honor the history and sacrifice that truly define the heart of Flagler County law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Flagler County Commissioners. My name is David Williams and I just want to give a brief speech on why I am in agreement with renaming of the operations center. My name is David Williams. I've been a resident of Flagler County for 24 years and proudly served with the Flagler County Sheriff's Office for 23 years, retiring in December of 2024. When we name facilities or landmarks after someone, it's usually to honor individuals who have made a lasting impact on our community. We see examples all around us, the Fitzgerald Performing Arts Center, Sal Campanella Stadium at Flagler Palm Coast High School, and Grady Pretha Cove leading into Herschel King Park. Tonight, we have the opportunity to continue that tradition by naming the Flagler County Sheriff's Office Operations Center in honor of Sheriff Rick Staley, one of the greatest sheriffs to serve our county. When Sheriff Staley took office in 2016, the sheriff's office faced serious challenges, financial strain, internal controversy, and a lack of direction. In the eight years since, he has transformed the agency into one of the most respected law enforcement organizations in Florida. Through strong leadership and solid partnerships with our local governments, Sheriff Staley has improved every area of the agency, from increasing deputy pay, modernizing equipment, reducing crime by 50% since 2017, and maintaining the fourth lowest crime rate among Florida counties with populations over 100,000 residents. Today, the Flagler County Sheriff's Office is a premier employer, attracting skilled deputies from across the state and from other states as well, who want to work for a sheriff in an agency that's supported and appreciated by the community. That wasn't always the case when I first joined over two decades ago. Naming the operations center after Sheriff Staley not only honors his leadership and dedication, but also reflects the pride and confidence that the people of Flagler County have in their sheriff's office today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I miss him.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Steve Campfield, Commissioners' Chair. I would just like to voice my support for renaming the operations center the Rick Staley Center. I don't have a prepared speech, but I will tell you, I interface with Sheriff Staley's employees on a weekly basis. I'm the president of the Flagler Gun and Archery Club and we are their training facility. So we have seen a change in attitudes, in frequency of training. I just happened to look last week, I think the last 12 months, they've been out there training 72 days. That's just phenomenal. And that all comes from leadership, from the standard that Rick Staley sets. And I think it's totally appropriate that we don't wait to name this building after the driving force behind it until he dies. I really think we should honor people that serve like he does and lead like he does while they're still here to enjoy our accolades. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Raymond Roy, Painter's Hill. As a member of, a veteran of the Navy, retired firefighter, I oppose honoring the building in his name. It does not meet the expectations for an honors of that magnitude. We just buried a firefighter training officer who died of cancer and in the fire service, that's a line of duty, death. And then he was honored in Colorado for this death. The flag behind is an honor for veterans who, family members put that flag up in their homes. We don't need to. I prefer to see Stanley get a beautiful plaque in the building, in the lobby area. The way I understand it, it was in the building twice, I believe, and there's a lot of memorabilia in there now with brass. So I would think it would be more of an honor and I appreciate the 50 years of service. And I did service too, Greg did service, and it's service. But when somebody dies in a line of duty, that's why we honor buildings and streets and stuff like that. And I think we're watering down the awards by doing that. I'm not a big fan of the American flag having a red stripe through it, blue stripe through it, green stripe through it, representing it should be the American flag, okay? And we just keep doing these honors and promotions and we're forgetting what it was all about for honor. And death of a member is to honor buildings and streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the dais for further discussion or motion.
Any discussion? I mean, you okay with me making a motion?
You go right ahead.
Now, I didn't know if you wanted to have discussion. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 8A, request to name the Flagler County Sheriff's Office Sheriff Rick Staley Law Enforcement Center.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Pennington and seconded by Commissioner Carney. The only thing I'll add as part of my discussion is, we talked about this during the workshop. My interpretation of the ordinance is for those that are not currently serving, but there's, it's not clearly stated. And it's, I think it's something we address with the policy revision or relook at it later on. You know, we had consensus by a majority to move this forward. And I don't see any reason not to support my fellow commissioners on this for many of the reasons that have been stated by, in the proclamation for the, you know, the good work that Sheriff Staley's done and his lifetime of service. And lately now, it's the state recognition with his rising to certain state positions and leadership within the state that ultimately bring honor to Flagler and status to us and hopefully some perks along with those positions. But is there anybody else that had anything?
I would just say the current policy doesn't really even have a path forward for someone killed in the line of duty. So that's just something to think about going forward of adding to the verbiage.
Yeah.
It's just not there. It doesn't even allow a path forward for an employee or anything.
Right. Okay.
Sorry.
If I don't see any other comments, I'll go ahead and call the question. Let's do a roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Carney?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Thank you. Jumped the gun on us, Mr. Hanson.
Not even a name. He's quick straw.
He's quick. Quick with the vote. All right, congratulations, Sheriff Staley. And I know Chief worked hard getting things ready for that, so congratulations. And as I would say for the Durrant's family that's here, you know, this is not to say that Sondurant is not worthy and that we can find a place with honor to recognize him in the county. There's a process within the naming rights policy to bring that forward. So I would ask the family to look in the county and find that appropriate place and fill to look in the county and find that appropriate place and fill that out and submit it to the county. That's what happened here. We just didn't come up with this at the dais. It was presented to us following the policy that we have in place. So, please look at that and bring that back to us. Thank you. And thank you for speaking tonight. Okay, next item is 9A. This is a legislative. It's an application for review of a notice for proposed change and an amendment to the approved plan unit development and site development plan for Plantation Bay Development of Regional Impact. Mr. Mangle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I go back and, oh, looks like I copied the wrong one. I can fake it. This NOPC accomplishes three things. We have an extension of the DRI. We have an adoption of a new MAP H. And then we also then have a third item that's the reverter on the Land Development Code tree provision, tree regulations. And so, what happened with this is we had our tree regulations come in. Let me see if we can try that. Want to try it one more time? See if it's gonna, that's not it? Oh, it's here? Okay, I can't see it here on my end, but that's all right. Anyway, I was hoping to get the MAP H, so be able to show you that, but that's okay. And so, the three changes then that are part of this, and what happened if you go back in a few years back with the legislature, the DRI provisions in Chapter 380, Section 3806 were changed significantly. We no longer have a review for what's known as substantial deviations. It's now left locally for us to review these amendments, basically as they're presented to us for what I believe is best left as local. Thank goodness. It was there. I wasn't going totally crazy. So, this is MAP H. And so, this is among those changes we have, MAP H is being amended. And so, that's mainly keeping up with the times. That's going to tell us what's next to come in areas. And so, we know where we're at in that area off, basically along the purple, along US 1. That's our area now where the DRI is extending over into. And to head back just one slide, that extension date, January 22, 2048, is going to be the new expiration date for the DRI. I mentioned the vesting on the tree protection. That's needed because, not just because of what we got caught up with with Senate Bill 180, but the, and other provisions like it, but what may yet come from the state legislature. And so, the DRI developer here is saying, you know what? We're okay with this. We've got a landscape program that's working good for us specifically. We're in favor of that part because it helps them to be able to keep some predictable standards within their own development. They got caught up with our change, but I think less significant is our change as much as what could come out of the legislature. That's the concern that they're trying to hopefully hedge by saying, we're going to go back to what was originally in the Land Development Code. We want to be vested to that. I mentioned there solely the prerogative of our local government, that section on that 3806, and the statute's been gutted. And so, I don't have to talk to you about substantial deviations. I don't have to talk to you about things that are of a regional impact because that really doesn't exist anymore in the statute. Now, it's our prerogative to look at it and say, okay, are we comfortable with those three changes that are happening? That extension to 2048, the adoption of the new MAP H, and then that vesting to our tree requirements. If your answer to those three is yes, that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, the Land Development Code, and furthers good planning, especially as it relates to the DRI and its development order and progression of what we're seeing in Plantation Bay, then your response to that ought to be approval of this Fifth Amendment to the DRI Development Order. I give you that option, three options here. That first one being approval of the resolution constituting the Fifth Amendment. That second one being denial, and that would be on the grounds that this Fifth Amendment is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, the Land Development Code, or some other factor that's in play here with this. Then your third option would be to continue this to a time and date certain, when myself or the applicant can come forward, answer your questions in another public hearing yet to come. Mr. Dick Smith with ICI is present for any questions you have from the applicant. With that, I'll close. Wait any questions or comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Mangle? When does the development rights expire for the remaining units?
With this one, as it's presently, I can't remember, 2028. Yes, so it's right on us.
I mean, I did the math. I just was checking to make sure because of the 20-year extension. So, why now? We've got three years.
I think it's good to get ahead of it because the other part is, is you don't want to have the expiration happen. And so, that's one concern. And it's moving pretty good. Development's moving fairly well. I'll let Mr. Smith handle it the rest of the way. But we've always done it where we extend it. And we used to have, so the hand wringing for me is we used to have some language, and I think it was 10 years or more was a substantial deviation. Don't quote me. I can't remember the statute because now it doesn't exist. And so, that's my first question. It's like, oh, my goodness, 20 years. But when you think about how long this has been here, this has been here since the mid-'80s.
Yeah, I don't.
We've been progressing. We're at 5,000 units. I've got the unit count I just got done doing. We've got quite a bit left.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the 20 years. It actually works out to be about the same on a per-year basis as what's been developed in the past. So, I mean, there's a little bit of playroom in there, but it's between 15 and 20 years.
I think it's said in the packet that you were impacted by COVID economic downturn, things like that, things that you couldn't control specifically.
Dick Smith, ICI Homes, 2379.
Good evening.
Bell Road, Daytona Beach. Good evening. We certainly want to complete it before 2048. I can tell you, we're about halfway through now. We started in 1985, so we've been at it for 40 years. It's hard to believe, quite honestly. But the main thing that's changed, quite honestly, is when we've pursued some financing recently, they've balked at the short duration left. And so, they would like a little more certainty that we're not, the rug's not going to get pulled out from underneath us. Our goal is to be as methodical and maximize value as best we can. We'd like to move through quickly, but we also want to maximize value. So, we think that time duration helps us on all fronts.
Okay. My skepticism was the timing of it just seems, with 180 in the background, seems like an opportune time to file when things are least restrictive. And the changes could be, we don't know what's coming up this legislative session for 180. But yeah, again, I think the length of time is appropriate, doing the math, going backwards. And I think, the absorption rate was just under around 100 units a year. And anybody else with questions while I'm reviewing my notes?
I didn't really see any big concerns in it. And now that you explained the line, that's exactly right. And they're gonna, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just a business thing, and you're right on track, so not a problem.
And even with 180, right, as a policy decision, it's not exempting them from the new tree ordinance, isn't really an issue with 180. It's just a policy decision based on the track record of what you've been doing in the past and being standardized with your product. And I don't think, driving through the neighborhood, anybody would balk at that. And there's plenty of preservation areas built into the plan. And the fact that, right, the map is basically updated, but the same areas, there's no increase in density. So, I get it. You want to increase it and show the investors, the banks, you'll be around for a while longer. And I think it's interesting to note that big developments like this don't pop up and fill up overnight. I think people would be amazed at the fact that it's 100 units a year. It was the absorption rate basically over time. And I know there's other places that go much faster than that. 100-unit subdivision exists what seems like a blink of an eye in some instances. And this one is a high-end custom. So, I get that absorption rate is going to be different than more entry level, but you've got a good mix of units in there, too. Anybody else?
Yeah, I know. I've been in the project many times, and it's a professionally done to a flaws. And I respect what they've done. 40 years is amazing to hang on to certain parts of land and make it look beautiful. And the aesthetics and the quality has always been there. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you for the kind words. Thank you.
All right, so at this time, I'll open it up for public comment. If there's anybody in the public that wishes to address the commission on this item, come up to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Any final questions or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve item 9A.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All right, hearing no other comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move to the county administrator report.
Well, thank you. Just one thing that I wanted to provide an update on is the coastal erosion. We've had some recent nor'easters that have caused noticeable coastal erosion along portions of our shoreline. It appears that the northern areas fared a little bit better than those to the south. And then I emailed you a copy of pictures where the seawall at Beverly Beach Camp Town had been compromised and had failed. I wanted to let you know that our coastal engineering administrator has conducted a full assessment of the impacts, including photographs. Our drone team went out there and shot some video. She did site inspections, and she's in the process of finalizing a comprehensive report. However, due to the large size of the file, which includes numerous photos and that video, it is too hard to email. It's too large. So, we're going to coordinate with our IT team to make that document public, to make that full report available to the public. It'll be on our coastal management website within probably the next week, possibly next week at the latest. I just wanted to make you aware of that. As soon as we get that out there, we'll do a, you know, more of a press release or links to it on social media to let the public know that it is out there. And on a side note, we did notify the property owner at Beverly Beach about their requirements, their responsibility that they have to remove that seawall, and provided some guidelines to them. So, just wanted to make you aware of that. And that was it. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
May I ask her a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Will that impact permitting on Reach 2?
We actually just received the permit for Reach 2. So, not only do we have the DEP permit, but we also received the Army Corps of Engineer permit. So, we're ready to go on that.
Yeah, but that seawall was in part of the armoring at that point.
What will happen is that section or that area may need to be reworked. At the time when we go out to start, it will have to, the profile might change because, from what I understand, from talking to our engineering staff, the profile in that area had the dune more or less up to the height of that seawall. Well, now that that seawall has been undermined, collapsed, that debris is going to have to be removed before we go out there. But it may change the profile of what that looks like. I'm not sure that they will be able to permit that seawall in the same spot because if you actually look at how far out it stuck out, further than some of the other areas, whatever the new regulatory guidelines or permitting looks like with DEP, that's what they're going to be left with. So, it will have an impact as far as we'll have to change some of the design in that area. But it will, you know, as it moves forward, we'll go through that process.
They said that was a 40-year, 40-years-old project, right?
I think it looks older than that. I'd probably say 80 to 100 years.
He said 40 years. That's what I saw, 40 years somewhere. So, it will be updated to what has to be done there at this point, right? It wouldn't be the same product.
The property owner could go through the process of working with FDEP to replace that. Timing-wise and permitting, I don't know what that looks like as far as when we start. Based on the guidance that we received from people that are in the business that do dredge projects, more than likely, based on the availability of equipment, we're probably looking at a summer of 2026 before we actually start Reach 2. So, we had anticipated it to be in spring, but it's going to be based on the availability of when we go to bid it out. So, now that we have the permit, we'll start that bid process. But some of the early feedback that we're getting is it may be closer to summer rather than spring.
Thank you. That's all, sir.
Pardon me?
That's all I have to ask.
Thank you. There's different, they also are faced with different type of, they don't have to go back with the same construction technique that they had before. So, there's other less techniques that don't have to disturb as much area. But so, I guess we will just address that area as we get closer to the timeline where the seawall is.
We'll have to monitor what they're looking to do because replacing that seawall, if that is what they choose to do, it's going to be on them. Timing-wise, I don't know how it aligns with our project if we were to start before they did. You know, there will be some coordination, but it's too early to tell what that looks like.
Right. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez?
Okay, I'll actually keep it brief. Just for the, also for the benefit of the public, I just want to commend that we did complete the 5.15 acre purchase of the Marlowe property as environmental sensitive land. I think I'd like to commend Sarah Spector from our office for completing it. And I think the next step is now we're going to try to effectuate the transfer of the property over to the city of Palm Coast. And we have been working and cooperating with the city, so that should be done. And there are other things we're working on. I think at this point, just want to keep it at that. We are working on them, but just want to keep my report brief tonight.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, we will open this second community outreach, second 30-minute time period for public comment. Anybody wish to approach the podium, address the commission for public comment? Good evening.
Good evening. Melanie Thompson, John Anderson Highway, unincorporated. For six years now, I've been concerned about the Veranda Bay development on John Anderson Highway. The project has been split into two projects, if you haven't been updated on that. Veranda Bay on the east side is going to be residential, and the west side is going to be called Summertown, which is all going to be commercial. And I'm not quite sure when all that land changed zoning to vacant commercial because it used to be timberland and ag. My main point is the Summertown, which would be a large-density commercial, is going to butt up to that Eco Discovery Center and the Beulah Creek Headwaters Park that's coming. So, imagine being in the park and looking across the creek and seeing the hotels and the restaurants and the gas stations, et cetera. The park will be on the west of the creek, and Summertown will be on the east of the creek. They should be connected. I believe Summertown project will have a devastating impact on Beulah Creek as the creek runs from Route 100 all the way south to Walter Boardman and farther. Many people have property along both sides, and any changes on one end will affect the other. I was wondering if it could possibly be that maybe 80% of this property could be designated as preserved, unbuildable, and maybe the other 20% from Route 100 down can just be strictly commercial and only be accessed from Route 100 and not on John Anderson Highway. I know the county just paid $6 million for 3,000 acres for conservation out in Bonnell. I'm just wondering if there's any type of grant or state chip in some money to maybe save this land from destruction. Could the Florida resident president that we have maybe throw in some pocket change to help? This land is not a flooded marsh in the middle of nowhere. I'm speaking for the pioneers, the settlers, the Indians, the buried past, the animals, the ecosystem, who have no voice to try to stop disturbing. If at all possible, the only special piece of land left in the county really needs somebody's attention. Hopefully, our district commissioner might put a little bit of effort into bringing it to somebody's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Yeah, good evening again. Darlene Shelley, Case Section, Palm Coast. I just want to echo on that a little. I just want to echo on that a little bit as far as environmental concerns. I know you're probably very tired of hearing me come up here and, you know, plead from my heart to you about the quality of life and safety, health, and welfare of the children and families of Palm Coast and Bonnell and Flagler County. Because it's not debatable that piston-engine aircraft emit toxic lead and toxic chemicals. In fact, I've told you before and I've given you the paperwork of the well test results from Beulah ruins in which the lead results in three years were five times higher. And that's because all of these emissions at 200 and 300 feet above our city cannot dissipate into the air and they fall to the ground and they wash into our canals and our waterways into Black Branch, into Beulah Creek, into Graham Swamp, into the intercoastal waterway, Beulah ruins where they have one of the few water testing facilities. And I handed those results to you, so I'm sure you're aware of that. And then we have the lead test that folks on social media are referring to to claim that there is no lead issues in Flagler County, and that's simply not true. I know for anybody on, on the dais or on social media to say that the results were de minimis or minimal is incorrect because there are no safe levels of lead. The tiniest amount is harmful for children, and we know it causes ADHD and learning disabilities, anger issues in our children, miscarriages, and troubles for women's fertility, and the list goes on and on. And this is from the EPA. This is not my opinion. This is the science. So, I know you all have your minds made up and I know the reasons why, you know, some of you have such an affinity for this airport, but the fact of the matter is it's affecting our quality of life. It's affecting the values of our home, and it's violating our rights to peaceful enjoyment of our homes and our communities that we pay taxes on. And again, the transparency, the lack of transparency, and this consent agenda is mind-blowing to me. The public have no idea what just happened here, but I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring you back to the board for commission reports. I'll start with Ms. Richardson.
Well, I wasn't prepared. Yeah, I got caught. I will say that I was at that event when the officer was there. I was present. I went on my own to make sure that I could enjoy the opportunity to see us at our best. It was 350 people at the Crime Stoppers event. I am involved with Crime Stoppers on a personal note, and it was very rewarding to see our detective. First, I was able to sit with one of the other top winners and it was, it was quite a, quite an event, so I was happy to be there for them. Very, very exciting. We've had a rough, rough week. I think we all know we've had a rough week, week and a half, two weeks, and all of us are trying to do the best we can. I want to appreciate everybody who's here today. Thank you for being here. It's not easy to work in an environment that's had such sad, sad things happening lately. I'm going to stay positive. I want to thank everybody who's here, all the departments that are here. Thank you for staying through our meeting, and that's all I have to say. I hope everybody has a, a great time in this cooler weather and be thankful that we live in the most beautiful place in the state of Florida and probably on earth. And I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Carney?
Sure. I really didn't have a lot prepared. I would like to address the speaker regarding Veranda Bay. The county learned of the annexation, you'll have to help me if I say this wrong, but they have to announce that there's a potential annexation, and the county did receive that. The county did attend the Flagler Beach City Meeting because it will be addressed at the city, at the city level. The county attorneys, both Sarah and Michael, prepared statements regarding our concerns with the annexation. Sarah prepared a 14-page memorandum for the commissioners, and this is all public records, so if you, if you want me to send you any of this, just let me know. There is not a willing seller. So, in order for Flagler County, the state of Florida, the federal government to protect that land, there has to be a willing seller. I think that some communication or maybe verbal communication has been made, but there's been nothing concrete as far as what a potential value would, that land would be sold for. I'm with you. When I learned of the original annexation several, probably a year ago now, I envisioned the same sightline that you do. We're standing in this brand-new, beautiful preserve that we're spending millions of dollars on, and you look across a little Beulah Creek and there you see 1,300 homes. The vision, the vision is ugly. I believe the county is doing our, our part in pointing out some of the issues with the current proposal for annexation. We're not done. It's basically, we're just, they're not, Flagler Beach is not having another meeting on this issue until November. I think it's their first meeting in November.
The 13th is when they're having their first meeting.
So, will we have representation at that meeting?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
And we, and we have still been in communications with, with the city.
Okay. So, we're, we're doing our joint part because we are the, we are the area that's being annexed out of. So, because it's a voluntary annexation, we have a role, but the city of Flagler Beach has to show its part in order to get the annexation. So, thank you for your feedback and your fast response to my questions. It makes sense, but we have to make sure the other side is hearing it. We won't know anymore until November on that. So, it's a slow process, but in the city of Flagler Beach, they did vote in, I believe it was December of '24, what is this, '23, that instead of the citizens of Flagler Beach doing a referendum in order to annex such a large parcel, that they took that vote away from the citizens and they gave it to the board through a supermajority vote. So, no longer do they have to, the citizens give their input, it'll be done. So, the five commissioners in Flagler Beach that will be voting on this are the people that we really need to talk to, if you're a concerned citizen. They ultimately will or will not annex based on a four-to-one vote or a five-to-zero vote. So, we're all in touch with them. The businesses in Flagler Beach are in communication. I think in general, Flagler Beach is communicating, and the people, mostly John Anderson and that area, are, are against the annexation. But all we can do is keep, keep trying. And if you want my phone number to call me after this meeting, please come up and I'll give you my personal number. That's about it. Yes, very sad time for us, and I want to say thank you to everyone. The celebration of life was, was fabulous. Thank you, thank you. The staff, I haven't physically spoken with a lot of staff, but it seems as though we are, we're getting through Jorge's loss, our loss, and I think we did a very reputable job of saying goodbye to Jorge. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson?
I really don't have anything. I'm a little alarmed by the accusation of transparency. The public can get to the same stuff we can, correct? And the backup is always good, you know, and so I'm a little taken aback by that comment because I think we do, I think our staff does a pretty good job of, of taking the issue and then going into the backup and reading it and find out what all the issues are. So, a little concerned about that. But the other thing, just a compliment to Heidi, the, the letter that she sent to Flagler Beach Administrator, I thought was really good, really good. I think you laid it out. Your, your turn, you know, it's your turn now. That was good. That was a good letter. Thank you.
Wow, I had one thing and now it's like five things because everybody brought.
As you hear, as you listen to everybody, you add to the list.
Absolutely. I'll just start with the nice fluffy stuff, which is we had our trunk-or-treat with Pal out at Hidden Trails. It means a lot to that community because they can't trick-or-treat out there for the most part. It's hard to do in rural, you'll be out there all night. But I want to thank Charlie Pecania, and I want to thank Heidi and Andy and all the staff. Andy and Heidi and I made 600 bags of cotton candy, which is not an easy task to do. And we found out little children are very particular about how their cotton candy is served, colors, taste, cone, bag. We definitely learned a lot, so thank you for that because it was a beautiful, it gets bigger and bigger every year, so thank you for that. Want to address Sheriff Staley. Congratulations for 50 years in law enforcement. It was not difficult for me to do that under how the current policy is written, and I think, you know, it says in there that future boards can always change the name of that building, but I don't think you'll ever see that. So, I think people like living in a, in a, one of the lowest crime rates in the state of Florida, and it's one thing we don't have to get up here and talk about every day. So, I'm grateful for that, and I, he's got a whole host of, of things he's done for us that most don't know. The Old Brick Road, 7D, I am now, we are pushing year four when we first made a decision to protect the Old Brick Road. So, I think since Mr. Rodriguez is new, and I know Sean has, only has so much he can work on, but I find we're getting closer, but we need to really make that a priority this year because we would like to, at least I would like to see an ILA with the Palm Coast Board that we have currently, you know, because I think people are very preservation-minded right now, and it's a good time for us to really protect the Brick Road. So, I'm grateful we're finally back with the map, and I'm hoping that our next step will get us even closer to conservation and figuring out what the FDOT would recommend and what we can prescribe to protect it in the future as far as whether or not we have traffic and such on it. So, that's really important to me. The airport, I want to address the airport because Ms. Shelley comes every time, and I feel like you believe it falls on deaf ears, and it, it doesn't fall on deaf ears for me. When I first started here, I had a lot to learn about the airport, and I think what you're going to find, because I know you're a candidate in the city race, you're going to find there's not as much power at the local level on some things. And you're going to find that the state has power that you can't supersede. The feds have power, and you're going to find you're very limited in what you can do. And I think that it is unfortunate, but that is kind of the way some things are, and that is where the airport is. And I'm hoping that the master plan boards and groups can solve some of the issues you brought forward, but I have, you know, have found over the couple of years that we just keep getting pushback and pushback from the FAA and everything, and there's not a whole lot we're going to be able to do. But you're going to find, running for office, the things that you want to do, you can't always do. And Home Rule erodes every year. They just take a little bit more and they take a little bit more, and the things you want to control, you just can't. And so, it's very unfortunate. And then finally addressing John Anderson, it is a shame that John Anderson was ever passed, that, that project. It's, it's not anyone on, I believe on this board that would have ever done that to Beulah. And I know we agreed early on, if we see an enclave in general with anything legals to notify us and to let us know what our options are. We would do anything we could to unwind some of that for you. And I, Mr. Belshi, if you're listening to this, I plead with you to come and discuss with us ways that we could protect Beulah. In Flagler Cat, Flagler Beach, the commissioners, I really, really wish that they would really think twice about Beulah before they enter into anything there. And with that, I'm done.
You're done?
I'm done. I'm just putting it all out there.
For now. I want to really just, right, one of final acknowledges for, for Jorge. It was really an honor to go to Jacksonville and, and witness his, his military funeral. It was a end of a very emotional week, but it was my honor to be able to, to, to witness that and be with his family. And as I saw Matt at the end, I reminded him that, that him and Kaylin are family now and, and that whatever they need, I think they're going to keep the house for a while, so they're not, they're going to be around, and whatever they need from us, all they have to do is call. All right, let me hit, Commissioner Pennington did an outstanding job with cotton candy. And, and the bags, you should have seen the bags she put together for the kids. Awesome job. You can tell you care for, for your area, and the kids really appreciated it. All I did was hand you sticks.
Oh, no, you should see that.
So, Marineland, Marineland's in the news. We have a, we have a new mystery buyer. People are asking us to do all kinds of things to, and I know we're doing our best to preserve the 35 acres that we're, we still have a team together that is pursuing that. But the, as far as the attraction goes, you know, I'll, I'll fill out whatever letters people are asking me to send to preserve the, the facility. I know there's a secondary bidder. I don't know if they'll, if it'll get to that, but I know Ms. Cook from her time on the tourism board and, and hope that there's a, a way for it to stay a functional tourist attraction for us here in, in the county. That's what I, I support. I would, I would like to see that happen. Veranda Bay, I, from day one, the, the floodplain areas that are associated with, that are within the Veranda Bay project should be protected at the highest amount. Unfortunately, state law allows some development within the floodplain areas even. If, again, if Mr. Belshi is listening, at least, at a very minimum, the floodplain areas need to be protected. I know there's a half a dozen people that are actively looking at ways of raising money and working with agencies, state agencies to try and raise money. The point being, we need a willing seller. It's, it's, there has to be interest, and we'll continue to push that. I've asked a couple of times without any positivity, but we'll continue, at least I will on that end, for the same points that were raised. I mean, you witnessed with the recent king tide, and our compound flooding analysis is, is real in that these things are combining for greater impacts than we've had before. The entire Bulow Creek area, which runs down through Walter Boardman and up through High Bridge Road and then out to Timoca where the, where the low parts of the road were, were inundated deeper than they've, they've been in the past with this one. So impacting the floodplain has an impact in that whole area and it, it should be avoided at all costs. And I'll keep working on that with my limited capacity. It is a city of Flagler Beach issue, but I'll continue working on that. There is another meeting for City of Flagler Beach Commission this October 23rd. So there'll be public comment period, you don't have to wait till November 13th. You can voice your opinion on the 23rd at the next commission meeting for Flagler Beach. I'm probably get a message from my commissioners that'll tell me, gee, thanks for that. And, and really, I guess the last thing is, is I'll say to, Mr. Rodriguez's legal department is humming, thank you. I think things are moving quickly through there and we're making a lot of progress. So everybody is with their new roles and responsibilities. I'm still getting used to it, I'm not there yet. I'm, I'm still used to picking up the phone for Sean for everything, but I'm, I'm getting through it. I'm, I'm starting to realize, glad you's Sarah. But then Sarah's doing a good job, so I'm glad you recognized her for the work that she did on the Marlowe piece. So thank you for that. I, really, that's all I have, thank you, everybody for coming tonight. Really, nothing else I can add, so thank you. And at this time, if there's a, all right, we have a motion to adjourn, we're adjourned, thank you.